Mr. Chairman, we now have a call.
Very good, thank you. If we're ready, we're recording?
Yeah.
Alright, with that, I will call the meeting to order. First off, let's do a roll call if we can. David, if you are Cecilia, if you will lead that.
Alright, Alderman Boyd, President. Alderman Conley, not present. Commissioner Vance?
Virtually present.
Commissioner Boyd?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Conway?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples, not present. Commissioner Goodman?
Present.
Commissioner Vines?
Present.
Commissioner Young, not present. And Chair Stroud?
Present.
And Chair Corn.
Very good, just clear-
Mr. Chairman, there may be a last minute substitute from the comptroller. Are they on?
Yes, Ryan is on on behalf of-
Yeah, Ryan's on.
A question for you, David. I did not hear, did you say Alderman Boyd was or was not present?
He does not appear to be present.
Not present, okay, thank you.
Well, I get to look at David. We have a call, I'm going to do it comfortably with- Sure. Good, good. Alderman Boyd also has a duplicate tag, so thankfully, we can proceed with the call. Go ahead.
Okay, so we do have a call. Alright, with that, the first order of business, as we know, this is somewhat unique for all of us to be on a video conference call. Right now, they are controlling the meeting at the office now at fifteen twenty. The only ones that are not muted are the commissioners at this time. When appropriate, we'll call out any questions by listing for the commissioners first. On your screen, on the lower left, on the lower part of the screen, there is an area that says chat. If you want to click on that, it will open up a chat screen. You can then submit any questions for the commission at that point, and we will then deal with those as they go along, so that you can still be recognized when the time is appropriate. There is a change to the agenda. Before we start the approval of minutes, item number six and number seven will be switched, so we will take up thirty-two twenty-first, ten thirty-one twenty-second, as the agenda is printed. With that, the next order of business is the approval of minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty, meeting for the commissioners. So with the approval of minutes, David, if we could have a- if somebody would make a motion from the commission, and state your name when you do make that motion, please.
This is Commissioner Banton, move to approve.
Second. And who seconded it?
Randy Vine.
So we have a- we have a motion and a second. David, if you will call both.
First, Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Please, just one.
You?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Boyd is here, aye. Okay, we have- so we have the approval of minutes. So at this point, I think Dodd is going to introduce our presenter for the item of PDA zero zero one dash zero two, NBD. And then we will have, at that point, a presentation between- from Opal Jones, and then from Cecilia, then we'll go into a- we'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing. So at this point, it's simply presentation. Hopefully, everyone has their presentation, or can see the screen at this point.
And that presentation will be given by Cecilia.
Okay.
Opal's up first.
Opal's giving an overview, I'm sorry.
Great, good evening, everyone. First, thank you for this opportunity to present our project. Doorways is an interface organization that's been providing housing, health, and housing to people living with HIV for thirty-two years. We're very excited about the opportunity to build a new campus on the North Jefferson corridor and use our existing facilities to North Jefferson. Our project is a result of several years of planning through our board and work with RISE, who is on the call with us today, and so they, along with Trivers, are able to answer questions for you. As you can see, I'm going through the slides now. As you can see, we have a three acre area that we have highlighted here, and it is a block away, if you want to go to the next slide, to our existing campus for families called Moncaya, where we have about a hundred people living on that site. So at the new campus, what we're going to do is be able to address the needs of homeless people affected by HIV, particularly the fifteen units of housing that we secure through the low-income housing tax credit program through the fall, but also expanding our services in behavioral health around mental health, substance abuse, employment, and life skills training, all integrated on one campus. In addition to our new headquarters, we have space for two retail days, and that is designed to address the stigma that people living with HIV often face. So that we'll have people on the campus for various reasons, both seeking services through Doorways and those getting community services through the retail, whether it be a bank or whatever we're going to have at those two days. We hope that our project will serve as a national model, because what we're aiming to do is address HIV and the end of the epidemic through a housing lens versus a biomedical approach. We've received a lot of support thus far from the city of St. Louis and several funders. We have about a twenty-five million dollar project in the first phase, is about seventeen million of those. And through the low-income housing tax credit program, through other public funding, and through a private capital campaign, we've already raised more than fourteen million of the seventeen million for the first phase. If you'll advance the slide, please. There you see the new campus in proximity. That's in the foreground and in the background is the existing family facility that we have, and if you'll advance to the last slide, please. And this is now the rendering of what the campus will look like through the work of Trivers Architects, through the last year of CFC housing units. And then, as you move to the right, you'll enter the Doorways administration and program space, all the way to the entrance, which is on the right, or the north end of the site. In the back is stage two, which we haven't talked about yet, another apartment building, that would be permanent supportive housing in the second phase. Right now, we're focused on the third phase.
I'm going to ask you to stop, if you don't mind. Can we just speak to everyone except for you?
I can open it up to questions, but essentially, that is our development and what our new campus will look like. And I'm happy to entertain questions about anything specific related to the design.
Thank you, Opal. We're going to hold questions. We're going to let Cecilia do the presentation first, just because no one, we're in a conference, and obviously, it can get really a little radical. So Cecilia, if you would go ahead and follow up with your presentation, and then we'll come back for questions after- after the following that.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so given the development project that Opal just presented, the current neighborhood plan does not allow for a mixed-use development, and a rezoning that's also being proposed. The request for you this evening is to amend four maps, two proposed land use maps and two proposed zoning maps within the existing neighborhood plan. Sorry, give me-
Can you have- before you go on, Cecilia, if you were not speaking, could you place your phone on mute? We're picking up other conversations in background, either telephone, television, or other individuals. So I'd appreciate it at this point if you could mute your phone.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You are unmuted.
Alright, so this is the proposed land use map that you can see here, and it's for the entire area. The box in the bottom corner is showing the proposed change. So the designation would be changing from retail trade multiple area to mixed use. And those are the designations that are provided by the existing map. If you go to the next one. This is the proposed land use map, which is designated for the Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Focus area within the planning area, and the change is the same from retail trade multiple area to mixed use. The next slide. The proposed zoning map changes for the plan are proposed to change from F, neighborhood commercial, to G, local commercial. Again, reflecting the consolidation of parcels to remove the right-of-way within the two-block area, and the proposed zoning map, if you go to the next one, showing the same change. Go to the next slide. The strategic land use plan designates this area as neighborhood commercial, and the designation encourages development of commercial uses that serve adjacent neighborhoods. It allows for commercial uses that serve multiple neighborhoods. Additionally, the NCA designation states that these areas may include higher-density mixed-use residential and commercial uses. Given that the project proposed here would allow for a higher-density mixed-use building with office, retail, and residential uses, the Doorways organization will also be taking that office space and intends to serve those existing residents and other residents in the region, from the Moncaya development and others in both the city and the region that are affected by HIV AIDS. Therefore, staff finds the requesting conformity with the strategic land use plan. Go to the next slide. I'd also like to note that this request comes from- comes after a significant amount of engagement with the neighborhood and existing organizations. Over several months, the Doorways organization has engaged with various individuals representing neighborhood groups, both via Project Connect and on their own. A letter that's attached to your resolutions, as Exhibit C, details this effort, which took place between July of two thousand and nineteen and now, March of two thousand and twenty. The letter detailed the engagement with the organization, and the list on the slide are those organizations that they've engaged with. Go to the next slide. Overall, staff finds the amendment to be consistent with the overall vision of the neighborhood plan, and finds it in conformity with the strategic land use plan, and recommends approval of Amendment Three. I know we want to move into the public hearing next, so I am- that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. With that, the next order of business would first come with the public hearing. And following the public hearing, then we would open it up for commissioners' full conversation and questions. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing from a commissioner, please. Please state your name before you make the motion, and your name before you second it.
And you have to unmute yourself.
This is Alderman Jeffrey Boyd. I move to open for public hearing.
This is Jake Benton, I second that motion.
Okay, at this time, we have a- we will have a public hearing. I will actually ask for Cecilia to manage this, because there have been those that have registered for a public hearing. I will allow her to direct those call- you know, those persons in order. We typically ask that you maintain your time limit to two minutes or so for your comments. Cecilia, I'll let you manage this portion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's one more procedure we're going to do, and we might decide. I think we can either do a roll call, or somebody can move for previous roll.
Oh, thank you.
Previous roll, Commissioner Bradley.
Hearing no objection to the previous roll, the public hearing is open.
Okay. At this time, we- our building at the moment is not open to the public, so we do not have anyone from the public who would want to speak in person here. However, if anyone is on a Zoom call and would like to present themselves in the chat, please put your name there, and we can read it from there. Or alternatively, please unmute yourself and speak up, so that we can hear your petition. I believe we were waiting for one individual, Jay Watson, if you're on the call, now is the time.
I am not- he might be muted.
Oh, Jay, you need to unmute yourself, we can't hear you at the moment. Oh, we just unmuted you, if you stop to unmute.
Okay, perfect. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, how you doing? Sorry about that technical difficulty. Well, yeah, this is Jay Watson from the St. Louis Development Corporation, Project Connect manager. And we are tremendously supportive of this project. Over the last, I would say, I guess it's a little bit over half a year, we've been engaged, coordinated with the Doorways team on a number of efforts to support this project, not only on the community engagement end with Project Connect, but also on the public infrastructure end regarding a number of priority projects, the projects the agency has lined up on Dupson Avenue. So through those- through those jobs, through those conversations, we've been able to coordinate our projects accordingly to support Doorways, and also make sure that our projects regarding improving the infrastructure area are moving as planned.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, could I please?
So if anyone else would like to speak up, now is the time. Otherwise, I believe we've had all the comments that we're aware of.
I'm not seeing any on the message board on the chats, and I'm not seeing anybody unmute them, so that it's time. So with that, with no objections, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. No move, Randy Vine?
Second, Bradley.
I have a- I have a motion and a second. Call for both.
Previous roll.
Having a previous roll, hearing no objections. At this point, we will close the public hearing. Now, at this point, what we will allow the commissioners to do is ask questions. I will call on them as we typically go through the vote roll, and then the two people will ask either Opal or Cecilia to answer any questions that are brought forward. And I know, Opal, you said that I think Mark from RISE is on the line with you, that if he may need to ask any of- answer any of those also. So at this point, the first question, Alderman Boyd, do you have any questions at this point?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Alderman Banton, you would be next?
I wish. I was Alderman. Uh, this is a- this is a great-looking, dynamic project. I'm excited to see it get off the ground. Couple of questions. One, you mentioned that this was going to be done in phases. What's considered Phase One and what's Phase Two? Or later?
Great. Yes, so Phase One, if we go back to the rendering, is the- what you see that fronts Jefferson. Everything that you see that fronts Jefferson. So, yes, there we go. So on the left of your screen is fifty housing units, which we've already received LIHTC funding for. And then what is actually on the front of Jefferson there, actually a bus representant, is the programmatic and administrative headquarters for Doorways, along with two retail days that we have. That's all Phase One, which is about seventeen million, give or take. And then Phase Two is what's in the background there, which is another thirty-six unit apartment building.
Great. And it looks like there was an extensive list of community events that you guys did. What was some of the feedback you got from that process, and did any of that feedback incorporate itself into this final vision?
Yeah, great question. Most of the feedback was, actually, was all positive, because it was safe, no one's come forward with anything negative. But it was excitement for the project, it was ways in which we could blend our programming in to support the existing neighborhood. We have a community room built in there, so that other nonprofits and organizations can take advantage of it. The schools, we talked about ways in which that we could enroll our homeless children in the schools more quickly, and form strategic partnerships there. It was about programming, maybe holding certain neighborhood groups. And it was also from, I guess, from elected officials and some other community neighborhood folks. They wanted to make sure that the schools were on board, since we were moving across the streets from six schools. We visited each of those schools, and they all were supportive, and most provided letters of support for the- for different funding at different stages. So it's been overwhelming and positive. Everyone understands the need for this housing, and has been supportive.
Great. And last question, from the rendering here, it looks like there's quite a few environmental aspects, like solar panels, green roofs. Are you guys pursuing any environmental accreditations for the building, or is that just eye candy?
Yeah, it has an enterprise green certification, I guess, or standard, if you will. And I'll let RISE address this, but some of those certifications are very costly. So while we may build up to the standard, we may not actually think, you know, the certification, because we are a nonprofit on a limited budget. That said, we're still accepting donations. The capital campaign is going on. Look for us at doorwayshousing.org, if you're interested. But, so, the green roof, you know, we're hopeful for that. The solar panels, we're hopeful for that. But that really has to do with our fundraising and how we're able to pull that off. So we're hopeful for all of it.
Great, all excited. No further questions.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boyd, you would be next, then followed by Commissioner Bradley, Commissioner Banton- Commissioner Boyd. Hearing no question?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley, any questions at this point?
No questions, just echo the sentiments of everybody else. This is a great project. It's great to see development in that particular area, where not a lot has happened in the recent past. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Conway, you have any questions? Will you entertain those now?
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Goodman, any questions from you at this point?
No, no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Vines, any questions from you?
Just two really quick ones. Number one, I may have missed it, but what was on the site before, before this proposal?
Sure, it was formerly a nightclub, which has been entertaining for us as a nonprofit interface organization to now own a nightclub. It's just remember the tourist nightclub from back in the day.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's all club lavish, but it's been defunct for a few years now.
Okay.
And then there's a house that's falling down, literally falling down, on one corner of the property.
So just two structures that would be demolished to make way for this?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other- my last question, are you- will Doorways retain any function in the existing building in the Central West End, or is that going to be on a sale block?
Yeah, so we know it's not for sale, although I get offers for it all the time. We run our twenty-four-hour residential care facility for the six people living with AIDS in the state of Missouri out of that building. And so that program will stay there, but all of our admin and other programs will move to the new building.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. It's an outstanding project.
Thank you, very excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vines. With that, let me say first, Opal, I applaud you and the work that you're doing. Congratulations, we look forward to that. I have no questions, but I will let the commissioners know I support the project. However, I will not be voting on this project. I'll be abstaining, simply because of an appearance of conflict. I don't want it to be that way. At this point, we've had all questions from commissioners. Cecilia, would you like to make- refresh us on what the call, the action is for this?
You move to the slide again. So we've ended the public comment. The action item is to approve the resolution for PDA zero zero one zero two, NBD, for Amendment Three for the plan of the Neighborhood Fifth Ward.
Okay. With that, we will entertain a motion for the approval of that item.
Conway moves for approval.
Second. Randy Vine?
Okay, with that, would you please call a roll- a roll call both, please?
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
That's me.
And the motion passes with all of one voting aye.
Great.
Very good. That moves us through the first part of this. The second item that will continue on this element is number seventeen dash twenty, RDM. Cecilia, are you making that presentation also?
Yes, sir.
She is going to make the presentation, members of the commission, with a slightly new procedure. Each of the following action items only have three slides. So we're going to assume that you've looked at your full program of what we sent you in the mail. Cecilia will do the highlights. Obviously, you can ask any questions, and we'll move along efficiently.
The next item on your agenda is for the blighting study and redevelopment plan for Jefferson Gamble Elliott Mills. Go to the next slide for me. The request before you follows the plan amendment that we just discussed. The request for this item is to approve the blighting study and redevelopment on the two-block site, and would facilitate the redevelopment of these parcels to accommodate a mixed-use building, four doorways with office space, program space, retail, and multifamily residential units. The next slide. This is the rendering you've already seen of the proposed mixed-use development. Go to the next slide. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends the area be declared blighted. Additionally, staff finds the request in conformity with the strategic land use plan, as well as the now amended neighborhood plan for the Fifth Ward, and recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
With this, instead of going through the entire list, I will ask, is there a commissioner that has any questions on this study? Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the blighting study of seventeen dash twenty, RDM.
I move for approval. It's Alderman Boyd.
Thank you.
Second, Jake Benton.
It's been moved to second.
Previous roll.
Previous roll.
Hearing no objections to previous roll, seventeen twenty, RDM is approved at this point. The next item on your agenda, we're going to change slightly. We're going to move thirty-two dash twenty, REZ, up first, because it is still dealing with the same area of concern. And at this point, Cecilia, if you would walk us through that one.
Sure, absolutely. Go to the next slide. Keep going. So this item on your agenda, again, does deal with the same development we've been speaking- So this item on your agenda, uh, again, does deal with the same development we've been speaking about. It includes fifteen parcels totaling two point eight six acres in the Jack Vanderbilt neighborhood, next slide. The request is to rezone these parcels between Gambel, Jefferson, Elliot and the alley in city block nine sixty-eight from a mixture of F and dual zone CG to local commercial district. The zoning administrator, go to the next slide, finds the request would achieve four objectives. It would provide additional housing and support services to a vulnerable population. It would allow for improvement of existing vacant land, and it would bring the zoning to conform with its intended and future use as well as eliminating improper dual zoning, uh, designation. Therefore, staff finds the proposed request in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the now amended neighborhood plan and staff recommends approval.
Again, I will ask, if a commissioner has any questions, please, at this time, raise them. I'm hearing no questions from commissioners at this time, so we'll entertain a motion for the approval of thirty-two dash twenty REZ as it has been sent to us in information.
Move to approve, Jake Benton.
Second Vine?
It's been moved and seconded by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Banton and Commissioner Vines, call for vote.
No. That is, uh, previous.
I hear a call for previous, I hear a call for previous role, any objections to previous role? Hearing no objections to previous role, thirty-two dash twenty REZ is com- is also approved. Again, also congratulations on this step of the process. We are all looking forward to the help that you give those in the community, and you can go back to, what's the website again?
Doorwayhousing.org.
Very good, there's your commercial. That's a public service announcement there. With that, uh, the next item is listed on your agenda number six, which is sixty-four, six fourteen Lake Avenue, number thirty-one dash twenty REZ. I think Cecilia, you will also be presenting that, correct?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
So this item, as you mentioned, is for six fourteen Lake Avenue, go to the next slide. The applicant is in the process of subdividing the existing parcel known as five one six five Washington and is requesting to rezone the northern portion of the, of the, uh, site from B to family to H area commercial district. A couple of things to note with the circumstances on this request is that the southern portion of a parcel would, would remain B and would allow for the redevelopment of that site for a single-family home or a two-family home, um, consistent with the rest of the area in the neighborhood. Additionally, the subject site is cut off from the residential neighborhood by state, um, and are pointed out in the slide here, and therefore lives as kind of a transitional use. Given that the request would allow for the renovation of an existing building, which is formerly a church and likely before that was a residential structure, um, into an office use, and that the adjacent commercial development to the north is also zoned H area commercial, staff finds this request to be appropriate. You'll see the renderings on the slide here and, uh, as well as in the exhibit of the resolution. Go to the next slide. The zoning administrator finds that the request would achieve three objectives, including create additional commercial services and growth, encourage additional opportunities for residential development on land that's currently vacant, and bring the zoning of the parcel into conformity with its intended and future use. Um, while the subject site is designated as neighborhood preservation area, given that the site is kind of in an odd transitional situation that I mentioned moments ago, staff finds that the request is in conformity with the adjacent neighborhood commercial area strategic land use designation to the north and recommends approval of the request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
With that, uh, prior to the questions, I'll simply make a note, uh, there is a letter of support in your package from Alderwoman Navarro for this rezoning. Uh, we'll go through the calls, Commissioner Boyd, any questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Banton, any questions?
Yes, so, uh, you stated that this before was a church, was a, a residential structure? Do we know, was it a home, or is it a garage, or what?
It's really hard to tell.
Do you know that info?
Record, go back to the rendering, one slide. Um, the original structure is the gray one that you see on the top image. And then the, the renovation that they're proposing is that addition on the front.
And it looks like from the satellite image that there's a, a small little structure behind that's labeled to be demolished, is that, what is that little bit?
That was a garage that has essentially already been demolished, uh, it was collapsing before they even came in to see us.
Got it, so is, does the, this property extend into that other lot there, I'm a little.
It, it did, it, the, the re-subdivision, uh, would propose it to be as shown on the screen now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Very good, um, no further questions.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Boyd, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions.
Commissioner Conway?
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman?
No questions.
Commissioner Vine?
No question.
Very good, with that, I will entertain a motion for the approval of thirty-one twenty REZ by Commissioner.
Full move, Commissioner Bradley.
Second, add a motion?
It's been moved and approved, uh, both by Commissioner Bradley and then Commissioner Vines, call for both, please. Alderman Boyd? Um, Alderman Boyd is multi-passing, um, tasking at the moment, so let's, uh, proceed with that. Uh, Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
Aye.
Motion passes with seven votes in favor. Very good, we are moving along, uh, the next item of, on the agenda would be thirty-three twenty REZ, uh, Folsom Avenue in Botanical Heights, and will allow Cecilia to continue.
Uh, that's actually.
Oh, Roman, you're there.
I am here, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific, um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, um, uh, as you mentioned, this is a proposed rezoning of two parcels, forty-one seventy-two and forty-one seventy-eight Folsom Avenue to the D multiple family dwelling district. Forty-one seventy-two Folsom currently has two zoning districts, it's dual zone, uh, zoned both D and F, while forty-one seventy-eight Folsom, uh, is zoned F neighborhood commercial district. The, uh, the site which you see outlined there in yellow is about two tenths of an acre. It's located at the southeast corner of, of Folsom Avenue and Clem Street in the Botanical Heights neighborhood, uh, which, uh, was formerly known as McCree Town. The, uh, the site is also located, uh, within the boundaries of the North I forty-four Local Historic District. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the existing uses are two vacant lots, and the petitioner would like to consolidate those two parcels with the adjacent parcel, forty-one seventy Folsom, in order to construct four single-family buildings. The, uh, petitioner is UIC, uh, which many of you know has constructed many homes in this neighborhood. UIC is, uh, representing Botanical Heights Homes LLC, which owns those two parcels as well as the adjacent parcel. Good idea, oh, thank you for advancing the slide. Um, the map on your screen there is an existing zoning map for the area, and it shows that forty-one seventy-eight Folsom, which is the corner parcel there at the Folsom and Clem, is zoned F, uh, shown in pink, while the adjacent parcel is zoned both F and B. Um, and as you know, the, since the consolidation of parcels with different zoning districts is not permitted, the, uh, petitioner has requested rezoning to the D multiple family dwelling district. Next slide, please. So in terms of comments, the proposed rezoning of the subject parcels would achieve three objectives according to the zoning administrator, including the fact that the proposed use would bring new housing opportunities to the needed area and bring the subject property into conformity for its intended future use. The, uh, proposed rezoning is, is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan, which designates it as a neighborhood preservation area, uh, which encourages infill residential development. It's also in conformity with the McCree Town South Neighborhood Plan, uh, which was adopted as a neighborhood plan by the planning commission roughly fifteen years or so ago. That neighborhood plan recommends residential uses for the rezoning site. So it is in conformity with those two documents. Staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Roman, with that, uh, we'll entertain questions from Alderman, from Alderman Boyd. Hearing none, Commissioner Banton?
Um, yes, so do you, is the plan to, there's, there's a existing structure on one of these sites already, correct? Is the plan to rehab that or demolish it and build a new, new home?
No, um, both, both of the parcels that are being rezoned are currently vacant lots.
Oh, okay, very good, um, then no, no questions.
Commissioner Boyd?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions.
Commissioner Conway?
No question.
Commissioner Goodman?
No questions.
Commissioner Vines?
No question.
With that, I will make a note that there's a letter of support from the Alderman Boardy for this, for this rezoning in the package which you have received, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the staff.
No move, Vine?
Second, Banton.
I have a motion to approve from, uh, Commissioner Vine, second from Banton, call for vote.
Previous role, Alderman Boyd.
Oh, I hear a call for previous role, any objections? Alderman Boyd, on the last row, you did not vote.
Oh, my bad, I'm trying to do, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do two meetings at one time, but okay.
I just, I just.
I'll be a high on this role.
All right, with that then, Commissioner Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
And I, and Chairman Earl says aye, sorry David, took over your space for a moment.
And as we move on, we'll make note that Roman did join us, but he joined us, uh, virtually, uh, from his home in Conde Latte, uh, with a PDA owned laptop, uh, that's also been configured in such a way that he can access his files and a number of the drives, his files on his desk computer at the office and a number of files in our system that work around there.
Very good, your office coming into the twenty-first, twenty-second century. Uh, with that, item number thirty-four dash twenty, and I don't know who presenting.
Me, me.
Cecilia, very good.
All right, this last act, action item on your agenda is for five, six, three, seven Pershing. The request is to rezone the single, uh, parcel from E multiple family dwelling district to H area commercial district in order to consolidate the subject site with the parcels to the west. The petitioner is also in the process of vacating the alley between the two parcels and will relocate and rededicate the alley on the eastern edge of the subject site. In other words, the petitioner will not be removing the alleys, but rather relocating it. Go to the next slide. Uh, this is the zoning map, so you'll see that it will be mapping the zoning designation with the parcel on the western side so that it can be, uh, appropriately consolidated and zoned, uh, appropriately. Go to the next slide. The zoning administrator finds the request would achieve two objectives, including create new housing opportunities on land that is vacant or underutilized, and it would bring zoning into conformity with, uh, its intended future use. The subject site is designated as neighborhood preservation area, and given that the site would essentially allow for the extension of mixed-use frontage along De Oliver, staff finds that the request is in conformity with a specialty mixed-use area strategic land use designation, uh, to the west, and therefore recommends approval of the request. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Very good, uh, the, prior to questions, I'll let you know if you have not, there is a letter of support in the package we received from Alderwoman Hubbard on this in the twenty-sixth ward. Uh, we'll begin with questions first from Commissioner Boyd, if there are any questions. Hearing none, I know you're doing two meetings at, at one time, Commissioner Banton, any questions at this time?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Boyd asks, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions.
Commissioner Conway? Commissioner Goodman?
No questions.
Commissioner Vine?
No question.
Uh, back to Commissioner Boyd, our commissioner, uh, I think it was Conway that did not respond. Hearing none at this point, uh, thank you, Commissioner Boyd. Commissioner, at this point, I want to take a motion from the, uh, motion from the committee?
You'll, you'll stick them out, but you should.
Move for approval, Alderman Boyd.
Second Conway?
Previous role, call for previous role, any objections? Hearing no objections to previous role, item thirty-four twenty is approved at this point. That completes our action items at this point, and I'll defer to Don for any delegated items or comments at this point, if he has any.
I do not, but I will tell you that Scott Oka, who's joined our staff, uh, also is helping make sure that when we do the street vacations, we're doing them prudently with proper input and principles at home, so, uh, that's good. I can say, uh, that we have posted that we will see you virtually or in person at the main meeting on, um, May sixth, so, uh, with that, as our mayor says at every meeting, practice your health, maintain your health, be kind to your friends and family and neighborhood, and please participate in social distancing, thanks.
Don, let me take, uh, a moment on behalf of the commission to applaud you and your staff. Uh, this went off without a hitch, believe it or not, uh, with right now twenty-five people online, and I think we were up to thirty-one at one point or another. So Cecilia and, and, and the rest of the team there, thank you so much for doing this, Roman and all. You all have done a great job, uh, again, to, uh, Doorways, congratulations on your project, we wish you the best. Please take care of yourself and your family, uh, I pray all is safe, and at this point, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So vote.
It's been moved.
Second Conway.
The second, thank you, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everybody be safe.